Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June 28. The time is exactly two o'clock and we call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission in the City of Ocean Shores. We will start out with a road roll call. Dan Burger here. Warren Ward here. Brian Bach here. Eleanor Dormant.
Yeah.
Richard Wells here. Patrick Unstead.
Here.
Great. First on the agenda is an approval of the minutes for the regular City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting held on June 14, 2022. I approve those minutes. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so. Move the minutes. Wow, we move on to public comments. Go ahead.
We need to do the meeting agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not in here. There, this, I missed it again. Alright, we need a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I hold that second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll show you then. Alrighty, thank you so much. Now is the time for public comments. Sarah, I guess we'll start in the room first.
Second.
Anybody has a public comment in the room?
Yes, I want to thank you, Sarah, if you put this on the website. 189 pages involving the utilities to Ocean Shores for a dollar from Oi Hoa Bay, the ethics and the food trucks. There's a lot of information here. Did you put this on the website? Thank you.
I have no idea. I'm gonna assume I did. You're welcome.
This should make it very good for us to discuss, citizens to discuss this with council. So I think.
Hi, I'm Yuta Fiera, Ocean Shore. Since we're considering purchasing your water utility, I'd like to see an accounting of all the fixtures that are in the ground, including all the maps that are necessary to locate all the water lines, including any backflow assemblies. So I want to know what I'm buying or as is. So I'd like to see that in writing as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Any other comments in the room? Comments from Zoom.
Michael Vilio, do you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Don Williams, do you have a comment?
No comments, thank you.
Patrick Case, do you have a comment?
Nope, not right now. Thank you.
Phone number ending in 9189, do you have a public comment?
That ends public comments for today's meeting. First bit of new business will be Oi Hoa Phase 3. Before I have Marshall go into this, which is required by code, so we understand what our main intent here after Marshall does what he does is in accordance with the Ocean City Municipal Code, have a public hearing of the Planning Commission between now and the 11th, meeting all the other requirements. So after Marshall goes through what he has to go through, then we'll go through on working out a time and date to get a meeting where we can get a quorum of the planning commission. So Marshall, all of these work.
Okay, so you've given me way too much credit already. Robert put this package together and has been working with with Oi Hoa Bay's engineering staff to basically get everything that's required for the journey put together. We are at that point where all of the ASBILs have been looked at. The utilities have been inspected and approved by each of the respective crew chiefs. The final clap. As far as this documentation has been prepared and is ready for signature. We're at the point now where the planning commission is going to go through as a matter of satisfying a requirement in code, just to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So Robert, do you want to add anything to the the order of what we're doing? For those of you that don't know, this is Robert Lund, our city engineer slash public works director for the last few months, and he's he's done a great job in in helping us get this foot together.
Thanks, Marshall. For the last 30 days. I really don't have anything to add. I think everything's laid out in the staff report as you lay out the process.
So if I had a chance to actually read most of the staff reports, incredibly difficult reading for an engineer like me, but I went through most of it and really after having a discussion with several people, the the function of the Planning Commission in this action is to host a public hearing of the Planning Commission with a public income and make specific comments on this particular action, which is the plating of what is called Phase 3 of the Oi Hoa Bay development. In order to meet the timeline of everything we'd like to meet, because this has been going on for a while, get it through. What we have come up with based on the public notification requirements and all the other requirements of code is I would like to propose that we hold a special meeting of the Planning Commission on the 8th of July. Time to be determined, but that would require a quorum and so as a first proposition I'll put out there, Sarah, say two o'clock same time as this?
What I booked it for.
Okay, for the public hearing. So by a show of hands, who would graciously give up their time to come here to do a special public hearing on the Phase 3 plating of the Oi Hoa Bay community? I can be here. Richard can be here. Alright. We have four. I know, Dan, you're out of town. Stan?
Yeah, I have to recuse myself.
Absolutely. Alright, good. So it looks like we can get a quorum that day. And I would appreciate, Sarah, if you could give us sort of a little bit of the expectations of the planning commission at that here. I don't like to put you on the spot at these meetings, but.
It's just to make a public hearing available for citizens to kind of make public comment prior to the whole package going to cancel.
And that's really it. It's not us discussing the technical merits of the process. It's us hosting a meeting allowing the public to comment. It's really all it is.
From my understanding, yes.
Yes. So potentially it's going to be a pretty short meeting.
Maybe not. It's up to the public. Sorry.
Do we do any comments or discussion ourselves after the public hearings close?
There we, there is really no, the function of that was done, as I understand it, way back when the original master plan was approved. This is just a code on plating of inclusion of things into the city.
Do we make decisions on anything following this?
No. It is strictly an opportunity, as I understand it, we can reconfirm with a lawyer, I'm pretty sure. Right. It is, we are basically hosting a meeting to allow the public to comment and then passing those comments on to the commission. And that's what we're all doing.
Richard? So as far as this meeting right now, we're discussing this document that Marshall has in front of us, and I think that's correct. And and my question is, is are there any changes between this document and the the initial plating documentation?
So there are substantive changes? No. There was a reduction in lots, which reduced impact to infrastructure, to environmental concerns. And and it was not, it was not a significant enough change to to require replat. So yeah, my my comment is there's no substantive change from the preliminary clap to the final clap.
So then, do we have to take action on this document right now in this meeting?
No.
Or was I just not?
No, this is, this is more of an orientation, just to let you know that this is coming and we do need to have a meeting to take public comment. You guys had input in the development of the preliminary clap and and commented and you know, made recommendations and stuff like that from the planning commission and then and now we'll, you know, we're we're bringing it back for final public comment. And then and then it'll go before the council with a recommendation to approve unless the public comes up with some comment that would that would prolong the process.
So we're basically just adding something to the staff report, which is the public comment.
Yeah.
Because the staff report is done.
Right.
And that's OSMC 1628040.
Yeah.
This is strictly a notification that the class coming for final approval.
So any other questions on this item from the planning? Hearing none, we shall move on to topic three. And I I'm listed as the lead on this, but in a very brief background, we had discussion about ethics last week. And I know Dan is busy working to update, a much needed update, planning handbook. Subsequent to that meeting, Richard came up with some additional clarifying language that he would like to bring forth for the commission. And what we would do is if we agree with Richard's clarifying language, we would adopt that as additional clarifying ethics language until incorporation into the revised planning commission handbook. Is that how you understand it?
Yes. And 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 before we go to that step, I want to point out that when I made the motion at the last meeting, that I incorrectly quoted the the major section and the subsection that the motion involved. And so I don't know if what we're doing right now will will fix that motion or if.
I take the motion. We we fixed it in the updated minutes.
Okay.
So that has been taken care of.
Okay.
In the amended minutes. And so what now, you're proposing, Richard, is that we do additional additional clarifying language? Because in our opinion, what we sort of did at the last meeting was how to refuse yourself and we wanted to get a little more clarification. So before you start, what we're really talking about to get to sort of the end of it is if you go to page 168 of your packet, if you printed all of it, which I didn't, I selectively printed it. But the part under ethics, it says page 3 of 3 of your packet, which is potential wording for a motion to clarify ethics and conflict. So you want to kind of work us through maybe how you got there and what this wording is, Richard? Because this was your proposal.
I I think I can do that. And if we look at at the ethical principles in planning, which is on page 24 of the current handbook, what it specifically says under section 4 is abstain completely from direct or indirect participation as an advisor or decision maker in any matter in which they have personal interest and in chamber in which such matter is under deliberation unless their personal interest has been made a matter of public record. Well, it was. The only person here who had a personal interest made it a matter of public record. And then it said, it goes on to say, any public agency or court or jurisdiction, that's us. So we've approved it. And and also someplace says something about the boss of the person with. Well, in my mind, John Martin is the planning commission boss. And his email, which is in this group of of documents, specifically said, yes, you know, I think that all commissioners should participate in the discussion and have a vote. And there's an implied unless it's a quasi judicial matter or unless there's is is significant financial gain to be made. Doesn't apply in 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 this case. In addition to that, Sarah sent an email to Jill DeBorken at MRSC. And I understand that MRSC is a large organization that has someplace north of six or seven lawyers who combed through all of the MRSC opinions. And Jill's Jill's email, I don't think I need to read it because you all have already read her opinion, but she said the same thing, that that unless it's a quasi judicial or or somebody's making money on the decision, that there's no reason not to participate. And so so I think that if we just attach this document and realize at the bottom, I I wrote this document up before we had that last meeting. And so I had included a motion that I was potentially going to make, but Dan's idea was so much cleaner and to the point that I didn't make that motion. So that motion is in this document that only include this in our upgraded handbook. Those motions won't be there. It's it's just the meat of this, the John's email, Jill DeBorken's email, and what's the third thing that I well, the fact that.
The mayor's guidance.
The mayor's guidance. And as I was looking at how the handbook is assembled, this is just a suggestion, but I think that we could have an amendment. We already have three amendments in the handbook. You could have a court amendment that specifies the reason for the rewording of the ethics and conflict of interest. And I think that's chapter 3, policies and and procedures. The reason for that change is this document, the 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 mayor, the the MRSC, and and we all agree that unless there's any significant financial gain to be made. And and the reason I think it's important to include that in the handbook is a decade from now when somebody's looking at the handbook again and said, why did they do this? Because the RCWs and and the lax are a little bit confusing. Unless you comb through that very thoroughly, then if we put this in here in 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 the handbook, then it's clear why we reached this decision and made the motion to change when a a commissioner participated in it especially. If that all makes sense, then then I would say with with consensus from the planning commission, that that I've been working a little bit with Dan, who's doing the 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 lion's share of this of this handbook update. And and we will fine tune the wording of this and insert it into the draft document and bring it back for PC consideration.
My only question is, should we take action now or can we sort of view this as an update of where we're going on?
I I think that we can just give a thumbs up that everybody agrees that the the meat and potatoes of of what's in front of you should be included in the handbook. And with with that thumbs up, then Dan and I will 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 integrate that into his handbook update and present it when it's ready to be presented. Did that, did that make sense, Dan?
Yeah, I, we also have to agree on whether those documents you were talking about around Stephen Baker should be included. Yeah, I can go either way on that one.
And and I I hear you. And and the reason I think they should be included is just what I already said, the 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 PC handbook specifically states now the three exceptions. And so the mayor's is is the boss's reason why we should all be able to participate. And MRSC is the is is the virtual legal authority without any changes we made to the handbook will obviously have to go to the city attorney. But short of the city attorney, then the legal peoples at MRSC, their opinion carries. And so I think that all three of those documents should be included because it it just, it it eliminates any ambiguity and and makes crystal clear why we are making what is actually a relatively minor change in ethics and conflict of interest as posted in the handbook.
I I can agree with that. And there there are some parts of the handbook we can't change. They come from other bodies.
Correct.
And those bodies do have conflict interest in them, and they're all different. I mean, there's about seven different versions of conflict of interest. So there may be some merit in in doing this, which Richard said.
And and I would ask that perhaps we can go a little beyond the MSRC or go somewhere, some follow a citation of state code or something else that would, you know, help with that.
So so as I have, as I have 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 researched on just the subject we're talking about, as Dan pointed out, that there's a lot of conflict about about conflict of interest. And so I think that the city attorney is the definitive answer to that. And with the city attorney's stamp of approval. And we when we submit it to the mayor, I think that we need to to somehow emphasize this section. This, have the city attorney pay particular attention to to this change in the rules and policies that we are changing here at the local level. And that way, the the city attorney doesn't overlook inadvertently overlook why we're putting this.
Any other discussion or comment on this item? Is there a particular motion we need to make?
I I don't think so. I think just a thumbs up that you, everybody is is in agreement or that we have a consensus agreement that we're going to include the meat and potatoes of this three-phase document in the handbook update.
And I would say that hearing no objection without a formal motion, we could infer that you do have sort of a thumbs up with no other discussion of objection at this point.
Oops, I mean, there we go.
Without having to do a formal motion. The next item also is sort of not a formal motion item. It is a sort of a, I just, and I kind of didn't call you first, Dan, but I knew you were ready to give us a a rough update on how we are doing on the updating of the handbook. See, has this become a topic of interest in life?
No. First of all, Richard gave me too much credit. He's done a major part of the beyond sections 1 and 2 for the he's re-formatted all of it and it it's a great looking document. Now, I have some questions that we need to answer because there's conflicts between our our bylaws and our procedures that we need to decide which way we're going to go.
And again, I believe that we can do this by consensus without passing motions because the motions will be the adoption of the.
Adoption. But so I would like to do it on a consensus basis. Okay. Like in the in the bylaws, it says, well, first of all, I got to take secretary out of all of this because.
We don't have one.
We don't have one. So. But it says in absolute meeting, the 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 planning commission, since the secretary of the planning commission shall inform the city council the request request of termination. If somebody misses three meetings in a row, they can be the the commission can get together and say, they're not here, let's get rid of them. But in the in the procedures, it says the mayor. I believe it should be the mayor. We've never gotten a council saying we need to replace someone. We worked for the mayor.
I think having it go through the mayor is the way to go. Haven't had experience about four years ago where my son was seriously ill and had surgery. And I was in Colorado. I missed numerous meetings, kept in touch with the mayor, read all the material, offered my resignation, and and she said, no, we we will wait knowing the circumstances and knowing you participated. And I think that's a good option because we could lose some good commissioners because of things out of there.
Yeah, but they.
All right, I believe that's unexcused, absences and hearses.
Yeah, hearses are cute, but to get an excused absence, it says that you you have to go to the secretary. I think you you should have to go to the chair.
Absolutely.
And and not the mayor, the mayor. We can, we don't even bother the mayor, but anybody who misses a meeting does not go to the chair and say, I'm not going to be there. That's an excuse that. Period.
And and just for clarification, which Dan kind of said, but every place in the current document, and it's it's sections 1, 2, 3, and 4, and sections 5 and 6 and the others are MRSC or or RCWs, so we're not touching those basically. But any place that it says secretary, I I think that that's made it pretty clear it's going to be replaced by chair. Chair or or potentially vice chair, chair's absence. So. You got, that's worse.
Okay, we've we've got conflict in, conflict of interest. Another section says retreat. It says it in here that we do it in October. We want to pick a month. Our retreat's usually been first hour, two of a meeting. Usually we did it in like February.
Right.
Yeah.
It was early.
It was early.
Yeah, we never done October.
I'm okay with just saying annually.
Annually to be determined?
Yeah, we don't need to pick a month. And what is, is retreat still a public meeting or is that the difference?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and and it's it's quick. We just talked about what what usually invites a mayor and talk about things that the mayor may want us to work on during the term.
Okay.
Okay, this is, this was an interesting one. And this is in the parliamentary procedures also, it says we, the chair shall buy your rubber rule or if the chair wishes to to take a part of the discussion or presentation, he or she must relinquish the chair to the vice chair and he or she completes, complete the statement of opinion. We've never done that. And I don't think it's necessary myself.
I was reading and and I I didn't write down a reference to, but Robert's Rule of Orders is a guideline to be filed, to be followed. And and I think it's in this document, it says that we can adopt whatever rules or procedure we want to adopt. And and there's a suggestion of Robert's rules, but as Dan just pointed out, here's a clear exception. It would just be tiresome and awkward for any time that you wanted to comment on the discussion subject that you turn the meeting over to to Pat, then make your just and make your comment and Patrick. It just, that's just unnecessary hoopla. And I think that should just be stricken. And and with it with a caveat that that we are in general following Robert's Rules of Orders, but but we have some exceptions to make the meeting. We have some exceptions to Robert's rules to make the comment of our meeting more fluid and dynamic.
Part of the discussion?
We could just move to suspend the rules to begin at the beginning of the meeting if we wanted to. With only five people in the audience, it seems a little silly to have a still there argument where you pointed where it's going to.
Yeah, I I just think, my opinion, I guess I can give one still. We just write that provision.
Exactly.
That's that's my.
We just, it was put in there because it is strictly an inherent Robert's rule.
Right.
Probably not applicable in this case.
Exactly.
So a simple strike solves that issue.
Okay, the next one is a roll call is done by the clerk of the commission.
The chair.
This was a, we have to add for the public meeting, we've got to put it Zoom. This is a have to come to the podium.
Yeah, we'll just update it for modern times.
It just, we have a a conflict again with the parliamentary procedure. It says the chair has to, in our procedure says, has to, he votes last. In the parliamentary procedure, he said it doesn't vote at all unless there's a tie. We've always had the chair vote last.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in the actual, the vote shall be shown hands by voice for roll call. Where there is not a unanimous vote, the vote shall be repeated by roll call.
And personally, having now attended two city council meetings. And personally, having now attended a new city council meetings, I'm actually okay with that. And only for having done what Ellen was trying to do right now, I think it will make it easier for her to record the sense.
Okay, so.
Wait, I agree with you. Okay.
I don't have the chair do the.
The chair do the roll when it's a non unanimous consent action. That also keeps us clean with all the cities doing it.
That's about all. Uh I think we can kind of get this done. I don't know if we can get it done by the next meeting.
I'm in no hurry.
The next meeting.
Other stuff to work on, so.
Yeah, so we'll we'll get it, we'll get it done. There's a lot of corrections, like you said, but um those were the main questions.
Save me some printing it out because I have a digital.
Yeah, we will, we will show what we struck out that we put in.
So what I wanted to just add, um the work that I've been doing uh on this update is a couple of the R C Ws have been radically changed or even eliminated. Uh and so what I've gone through the handbook and got current uh uh M R S C documentation and current R C Ws. The other thing that I did, uh I I reorganized and put all of the local part of the handbook all contiguous. Uh so for example, there is the uh the city directory and the link to to city documentation, the link to, link to something. Uh it's a one page thing and I just, they were sections, I think, six and seven. Now there's sections five and six or whatever they are, so that all of this local city stuff is is upfront. And then all of the R C Ws and M R S C stuff is down below. And then the other thing that I did, it's just the handbook is really confusing to figure out where you're adding it. Um and it took me some time, but I figured out how to separate the the uh footers on each page so that the footer clearly says you're in bylaws. Uh and and are you're you're in policies and procedures, or you're in R C W forty six thirty four, where the footer says where you are. And there is page one of in the bottom right corner of every page of the document now. Uh um so that just makes it easier to navigate. And when we're referencing, we could say page seventy six. Um uh so I still say Dan's got the hard part of 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 redrafting the rule. Um okay, so but and you'll see it all when we bring it forward. And and this is a question for Sarah. The document is, I think, now a hundred and I'll say sixty five pages. Uh uh do do you sometimes print out? And that's a lot of seven or ten copies of a hundred and sixty five page document. There's a lot of 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 not very useful ink. And and so do we just want to post these changes electronically? Uh you've been, Jerry could email all the commissioners the changes. Uh uh and I I'm just asking for for guidance particularly from Sarah, uh who has control of the print facilities.
She managed to print a hundred and ninety for today. So I mean, if you're okay with that, Sarah, I I I would like to have another paper copy. But when it gets to the discussion to vote to approve it, that is what I'm saying. I think it's easier with a paper copy right now.
Okay, it's it's, I like working with the electronic.
I understand.
And edit on the screen on flash.
For for reasons, other reasons, I'm not working on my tablet. It's, that'd be on a tablet, but I'm not here. So I'd like to keep this paper for now. Any other discussion about paper versus? Anything else, Dan?
No, I'm done.
Good. So now, next is, Pat's gonna lead the discussion on food trucks.
Thank you. Uh food trucks. First, I wanna change the name to M F U's so that we're following what Grace Harbor County Environmental Health.
And if you called it gaps.
Called mobile food units.
I've been reading so much, yeah, but so everybody in the world loves pants.
Yep. So M F U's is defined by Grace Harbor County Environmental Health or mobile food unit. Grace Harbor County Environmental Health is the main governing regulation, regulating agency in defining the rules and regulations that M F U's operate under. What that means, and I added this to you guys' packets. These are, this is a twelve page document that's found on the uh the county website of what it takes to permit and operate a mobile food unit. So it's got a lot of information. There's a lot of false discussion of what can and can't be done. Um anyway, they are the, they are the regulating agents on on M F U's. They are really the the how of of how M F U's work. So I'd encourage everyone to read that. Um city motion shores code currently does not allow for M F U's simply because they are not listed and are excluded by prohibited uses. And that's section seventeen thirty four dot zero four zero. And it says, all uses not specifically less listed as permitted or conditional use, there's are prohibited uses. Provided that the city planner may determine that a proposed use is substantially similar to a listed permitted use and authorizes the use in accordance with section. Provided further that use is similar to listed condition uses may be processed for consideration by the hearing exam letter pursuant to section seventeen dot zero six dot zero six zero. However, your city of Ocean Shore's code does seem to allow M F U's in section seventeen dot three four dot zero three zero conditional uses at. And that reads, uses that have some outdoor characteristics may be permitted if it can be shown that such outdoor activity is customary, customarily a part of such uses or that some public benefit will approve by location of such use in this district. Examples are automotive service stations, public buildings, facilities, nurseries, lumber yards, and other uses of similar and compatible nature. So one could say that through a conditional use, um a restaurant that is here into similar use could get a conditional use and have a food truck. Today, or an M F U, sorry. Um city of Ocean Shore's departmental interpretation of current code, the planning department, as I understand it, you can correct me if I'm wrong, currently interpret interpret the code as M F U's could be allowed because they are not specifically restricted. Health, building health and safety, the building department interprets that M F U's are not allowed because they are not a listed use and that the section of the code specifically says what I read above. Um however, they are the opinion that under section seventeen thirty four dot zero three zero M F U's are allowed with a conditional use. See above. Um I went through every page of this um plan review and permitting guide, and there's a lot to it. Um most M F U's require that there is a commissary kitchen that they have a written agreement with that they're tied to so that they can go back to that commissary kitchen and have food truck done, um have food cooling done. Um and they also have to have a servicing agreement which they return to every day and dump and replenish their water. So those two things are required by the county, not by the city of Ocean Shore. And lastly, they have to have a parking agreement for wherever they're going to park. So those three, those three things are kind of paramount to a mobile food unit working within Ocean Shore's. They have to have all three of those things. There is an exception. And if somebody has an absolutely fully contained uh food, mobile food unit, then Grace Harbor County will allow them the exception of not having a commissary kitchen. However, they still have to have a parking agreement and they still have to have a servicing agreement. So um so at the end of the day, it's really not the city of Ocean Shore's job or it's really not our thing at all to say how it works. It it's the discussion of where, I think that bears some discussion. But after reading all this, going through this whole thing, my recommendation is to allow M F U's in any B one, B two, or B three zoned area, period.
Right. Having read a couple of clarifying things that we discussed, you didn't mention, and I sounded in here again, the two hundred foot must be within two hundred feet of a separate rest, five hundred was changed. The the county did not change it, it stayed there.
Right.
Within five hundred feet of a restroom with hot water. So that kind of goes to the where.
Right.
So anywhere you wanna operate a mobile food unit, there must be a restroom within with hot water within five hundred.
Unless you have a unit that's approved for that exception.
Right. Unless you have a unit that's approved for that exception. What you didn't discuss, because I've read this, kind of like reading the plan and equal things to do. The actual truck is approved based on the menu. So depending on what you're cooking, says what you have to have in that truck. And if you wanna have a commissary, and if you wanna not have to be within five hundred feet of a of a hot water kitchen, then you A restrict your menu so you can use your facilities, your limited holding tanks to do the hand washing and the washing of the food, or B you do some sort of mega trailer that can do all of this. Is that how you interpreted it, Pat?
For the most part, yeah.
So it's, so if you had it read in the details, really tied to the meeting. And I think what we, when we talk about the where, and I don't know if somebody wants to bring this up. Uh public property meeting those requirements is the convention center.
There, the convention center, there are no parks that have running hot water.
Right. So that's one issue. The second way is, I believe, and we talked about this, and somebody please talk on this. This on public property, if you can find somewhere other or even the convention center, um it's a special event that has different provisions under both county and it's already covered under city code, a special event. Is somebody wanna talk about that a little bit on public property, the special event licenses?
So so I was looking at the O S M C special events code, and I've got it on the computer here. I can pull it up quickly if I need to. Uh and there's a line in the special events that says special events happen at the convention center. I would suggest changing that code to say the special events can happen in any private commercial property. Uh and that means that any private commercial property could host a special event and have food trucks there. However, the food trucks still have to meet all of the guidelines in that document, which include if 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 I were the category in and I wanted it at a special event and and the the parking code says that I've gotta have eighty seven parking spaces, uh and I put a food truck in there and not only have eighty parking spaces, well, food can't go there because by the parking code of O S M C, uh you know, so so the document makes all of those restrictions cut and dry. There there there's no ambiguity. So if we change the special event code to eliminate the, to rework so that so that it's it's not special events are not restricted to the convention code, then anybody can have hope a special event and if they hit all of the requirements, they can have a food truck.
Right. I guess, Richard, I'm playing devil's advocate here. Um yeah. If we do like Pat said, we do B one, B two, B three, you just allow it to go in all those places anyway. They don't have to declare a special event.
That's true.
So why do you need to change the current code?
All right.
What what I heard him say is that business or residential.
No, I I I I didn't, I didn't make myself clear.
Okay.
Private commercial property, I said, I think I said private property, and I did just say private commercial property.
B one, B two, B three.
B one, B two, B three.
So I mean, the discussion here is that we cover that by allowing it with a code change, by making it a M F U's a permitted activity on B one, B two, B three. Public property is already covered by the special event. And the parks.
Right.
Then the parks have their own piece of municipal code, which actually addresses it frequently.
So I I tend to agree with Dan. What happens to me is is I've read so many things and gotten so far down in the weeds that that some some of the obvious things just swine balls.
The last thing I would like a discussion about, um because I know the mayor and council will come back, is permitting and licensing. Um so the two questions being is obviously a food truck, in my opinion, we can talk about, that should get a business license. That goes without saying, but it does never hurt to say it, as we've learned. Um and secondly, do we as other municipalities want to suggest a special permit is required uh for a food truck? And this gets to the to the fair play thing where, you know, the the food truck isn't coming and taking business at at an easy opportunity on another piece of. So by requiring a permit, we can offer that. We, by discussing requiring to have a special permit for food truck, we can start talking about that.
So so I have a couple of comments, and and one was to address the first thing that that Pat was talking about about a conditional use and permitted use. And and I would like, I would propose that we draft code that says food trucks are permitted use, period. And and that'll again limits all ambiguity. Uh and and then I had given some thought to what you're just talking about about permits. Um and I'm working on what I heard you say last night about overnight rentals. And where that applies is, if I understood correctly, that if I own three overnight rentals, then I need to license all three of them separately, uh because it 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 makes for better accountability. So under that criteria, maybe it makes sense that food trucks be individually licensed. Uh but I would also say that any any commercial uh food and beverage retailer who has a county licensed commissary, and there's a whole list of things you gotta jump through to meet the county commissary licensing requirements. My memory is it's a three hundred and twenty five dollar application fee and and then all these things. So if if you are a licensed commissary, then you can have a food truck. And then the question is back to what Gary's saying is is should, should that restaurant, uh uh Venice Food Shack, should they be required to have a separate permit for their food truck if they decide to run a food truck? Or should that permit be rolled into their existing restaurant license? And I'm curious, we're going to.
Um I think if a business in this community already has a license to serve food, I see no point in making them jump through another hook and pay for another license because they have a food truck truck attached to their property.
I I think that food trucks should have the license, just like any other business, as I. Pay the same taxes that any other business pays to go through that same process. I don't think an additional license and additional fees is appropriate. Chances are they're gonna be tied to an uh another restaurant because of commissary kitchen requirement. But in the event that one of those mega trucks comes down here that's fully self-contained, just license it up, just like you do everything else.
And the comment I I would offer is perhaps we do the exact same thing, we opposite of what we did on vacation rentals and render an opinion that a food truck associated with a current restaurant is not a franchise. That if we, and one of us can do some reading of the franchising language in the business, and maybe it's already obvious in the franchising license. So it specifically in the business licensing portion of the code, and I remember this from the nightly rentals, I think the physical separation of the nightly rentals drove us to say each nightly rental should be a franchise. I would just like, if we look at it very briefly to make sure that we're comfortable, that we're not violating franchise rule of the current code.
So so I hear in general, I agree, and and just a hypothetical. So I'm I'm Venice Fish Shack and I have a food truck and I have my commissary license, uh but I wanna take my food truck. Uh, but I wanna take my food truck down to the jetty, and I have a, 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 a use agreement. With, uh, with Eric Noble's, uh, uh, business down there. So I'm within five hundred feet of the bathroom and, you know, all of those things. Uh, uh, if the food truck is on my property, and, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, is it, is it worth, is it, is it worth the discussion, is it worth the hassle?
In, in my opinion, if we can, I would like, like Eleanor said, by, have it covered under the grandfather, under the minutes. Restaurant owner's business license.
I, I, I'm happy with that, and I agree with you and Eleanor and Pat, I just throw that out as, did you think about this option and its implications? So, so I'm, I'm happy with that change.
So the question is, what next? And Pat, what do you think? Eleanor, go ahead.
I, I would like to just slightly change the subject here, because I know we've all had emails from Mr. Hayes. Um, concerning food trucks. And on his second survey, because he brought up my name. I would like to read into the record my response.
Please, please.
I was, a part of my response to Mr. Hayes was. If you ask people if they would be in favor of allowing food trucks. Knowing that some of our bricks and mortar businesses may have to close during winter months, would you be in favor of that? Do you believe it's a fair playing field when permanent restaurants invest in our community? Pay property taxes and employ many local people year round? He neglected to include the latter part. He states that a hundred and forty six votes, which is a very small number, said yes, no matter what, we should have food carts. I think it's very sad that a hundred and forty six people do not consider that when food trucks leave town, so does the revenue. People could lose their jobs and their ability to support their family. Some people who have invested in businesses in our community may not be able to survive the financial loss. The city will lose res- revenue. We may end up with fewer restaurant choices during six months of the year. A hundred and forty six votes does not convince me that allowing food trucks to come into town at any time is a good idea. I would be in favor of allowing them for special events. I would also be in favor of allowing our permanent restaurants to have a food truck on their property at any time. In order to better serve their customers. Thank you.
And I would invite people to consider, it's not that some of those restaurants would close for the winter, that they would go out of business.
Yes.
My life savings that I've invested in my business has evaporated, and yet I'm still on the hook for the lease. And the lease could be fifteen, two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month. I'm on, I'm on the hook for the next twenty years, according to my lease, so, so.
Again, you know, on, I'll briefly give my overview, and I'll have to help you shape up the path forward. I think this is an education of the city staff and the, and the, the, you know, city councilmen that. Food trucks where and how is really controlled by the county. There's not many places in this city where you could put a food truck and not violate county. So, no, other half of that is by changing the code that does give. The local restaurants in the B one, B two, B three, the opportunity to have food trucks. And thirdly, if they do have food trucks and they wanna gather somewhere else, your example of the approach by the Shiloh. Any food truck's gonna have to enter into a commissary agreement with a local restaurant anyways. So there will be that affiliation no matter what, because there's no way you can do a commissary back in Aberdeen. And run a food truck here, it's physically impossible. To meet all the requirements for sanitation, cooling, keeping the food cool, their transportation. So in effect, the local people with commercial kitchens are already there involved. That's all I realized. So what I would like to do is get a brief discussion, fresh people very well, about. Is there something I can provide and report to the mayor in the form of a recommendation? So that if the mayor wants to put this on the city council agenda next week, we could do that. Uh, what, what are your thoughts? I mean, yours is so simple, it's like.
I know, we're trying to keep it that way. Um, barring the franchise rule, which I'm pretty sure we're okay on. I think we make a recommendation to city council with it, that FMUs could be allowed in B one, B two, B three. Because they have to adhere to county code, and that's not up to us.
If you would make a motion to that, then I could, based on that motion, and we have concurs to a simple two, two line to the mayor.
I make a motion to recommend the city council that the food trucks be allowed in Ocean Shores in any B one, B two, and B three zoned areas.
Second, all in favor?
Before, before you vote, just ask, and Dan may have already answered this, and, and, and I'm, my old mind is getting slow. But does that, if, if we fall past motion, um, uh. Do we need to change the permitted or conditional use paragraphs in those applicable?
Not until the city, the city council agrees to it, then we would. It'd come back to us and we would write, rewrite the ordinance, and it doesn't have to be come.
That's, that, that makes sense to me.
It's adding two words to the ordinance.
Yeah.
It's not hard.
Couple of questions from, uh, please. How, how does this affect, affect the parking requirements in zone?
They have to meet all the parking requirements anyways. So if they're taking out parking spaces.
Are there require parking requirements in excess of what the food truck occupies?
That's what I'm saying, they would have to have enough excess spaces to put a food truck there.
I don't know if we have a, a zoning rule that describes exactly what proportion of spaces you need for, uh, that kind of thing, do we?
We do not, and, and that, that would be my question, I can't.
Please, please.
Is, so a, a restaurant's, um, seating dictates the number of parking spaces required for that restaurant's, uh. You know, parking lot. If you add a food truck to that, do you use the, the capability of the food truck to produce so many meals per hour or whatever to? Have you guys seen any of the other codes to make that?
My main question, what I've seen briefly in the code from the larger cities is a much more vague statement. Such as to not impede circulation and traffic. Um, and allow sufficient parking in the area. But again, most of these are big cities blocks, so we have a little different situation, go ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering if there's anywhere in the county, uh, plan for MFUs that, that spells out parking next to any business.
So my, my question, Marshall, is, is, is what determines how many parking spaces a hotel or motel has to have?
That's based on rooms.
And, and so, so the way I interpreted what Thornton just said is, is if, if I'm a hotel, and I wanna put a food truck in. And I have enough excess parking space, so I have the required Ocean Shores code. For the required number of parking spaces for the rooms that I have. And so I have to have seven rooms to meet the code, and, and my food truck only needs sixty five. That's the example that I used way earlier in this discussion. Uh, Jordan, in, in my way of base with what you were saying.
No, you're right, I just think we shouldn't, uh, require the food truck operators to contribute to that parking requirement, so.
And, and I agree with Gary, and all the reasons that I've done, but most communities have, have said, some specify five feet, some specify ADA compliant. Uh, uh, some, you know, but I think just a vague statement that you don't impede pedestrian. But right away, but.
Marshall's is a more technical question, because there is a quasi-scientific seating base, not meal production base. Determination of uniform building code of how many parking spaces per seat a restaurant must have. Do we want to offer that the food truck brings more cars in and would require more parking? I'm not sure if we wanna have a discussion, both of you.
I, I think without a doubt, a food truck's gonna bring in more people. And if you leave it open, an open-ended statement that they can't impede traffic. You know, what I think impedes traffic and what you think can be two different things, particularly if I've got money on my life, so. I think we need to define it in some way. Boom, what about you, Marshall?
I don't, I don't know that there's a scientific method to do what you're talking about. Um, and, and based on my experience around other food trucks, and, and I use Aberdeen's example around the, uh, the Steam Donkey Brewery. Um, they've got other parking, on-street parking in the area that seems to suffice for the amount of traffic. If there's not parking available next to the Steam Donkey, right in front of the food truck, people are moving down the street farther. But, but they're not able to park in the middle of the street and impede traffic. They're using other available parking.
So you don't think it's a problem?
I, I don't think, I, I think it's gonna spread out enough based on, you know, what I've seen go on, and, and even, even other types of business. I mean, if Bennett's had a food truck, I've never seen Bennett's parking lot a hundred percent full, where you couldn't throw a food truck and a couple more. Vehicles in, in the place, or maybe even, you know, take care of lockups.
So, Richard, I think that very, very few of the food truck, uh, customers. Um, outside of they drive up, get their order, get, make their order, get their order, and then drive away. And so, so I don't think that, that parking is very much of an issue. Uh, um, in other larger cities, there is on-street parking, and I have read in the code. Where, where some cities restrict the amount of time that you can park at a meter slot. Well, I counted all the meter slots in Ocean Shores, and they come up. Uh, so, so that doesn't fly. Uh, and where is any on-street parking in Ocean Shores, uh, outside of, of a limited amount of on-street parking? That shares the public right-of-way, for example, Point Brown, and I think specifically of the go-kart track, there's some shared space there. Uh, um, so I don't see a food truck being able to park in front of the go-kart track and operate, because they would be in the public right-of-way. Uh, and I'm not sure that Mike Doolittle would be very happy with them there, and so, you know. So, you know, I, I think that parking is basically a non-issue, uh, as, as far as the customers going to the food truck.
I, I would agree with that, um, but for the sake of this entire discussion, um. I just wanna make sure that we're talking about food trucks being located on private property in the business districts. Not operating in the public right-of-way or public facilities, you know, outside of the public right-of-way. Beach approaches and that, so.
In this thing, it says site map and schedules. MFUs need to provide a site map and schedules as to their chosen location. It must include location of operation, whether it is a fixed location, hours of operation. And when the unit will return to the commissary, if there are numerous site locations, multiple restaurant agreements are required. Remember to always request approval from the landlord and jurisdiction, i.e. city, county, and or private prior to setting up to operate in a location. So that, again, the county is requiring that there's a site map, that it, and all the documentation that goes along with it. For an MFU to operate, and they won't permit it unless they have that.
So again, just throwing out an idea for, for devil's advocate. Uh, if we change the permitted use, does there need to be a line that says food trucks cannot park in the public right-of-way? Uh, or to what Pat just saying, make it clear.
They would have to have this, have permission from the city.
Yes, what we're saying is, I think, helping out your better. We're allowing, we're suggesting to the council that they allow food trucks on R one, R two, I mean, B one, B two, B three. Anything else, that's anything that's city-owned, you're going back to special use permit, it's the only two ways to do it. And there's already a process to have one under a special use permit, and it goes through the same considerations.
So if, if I, if, if I just moved here from, from, from Fort Everett, uh, and I wanna open a food truck. Uh, can we, can we make it easier for that potential new, uh, MFU buyer to understand? The details of what you and Pat just discussed, or is it that just buyer beware?
No, this, this covers that.
This covers that.
That's what this document is for.
My opinion, if you're gonna operate a full food truck, and you don't know this by heart, you're asking for trouble.
Well, you're not gonna do it.
No, just shut down. And the minute you walk in and say, I'd like to permit my food truck, and then they give you the twenty-eight page checklist. And they wanna go through your menu and say, no, you can't fix that item, you can do that item. You're pretty much gonna be aware that this isn't easy. If I.
And, and I agree, I just, I, I'd just like to, to, to put all of the ideas on the table. Uh, uh, and see if there's anything that, that we have potentially overlooked.
Go ahead, Marshall.
Thank you.
Would we need to adopt this document by reference, so that when it changes, it stays current?
No, because this is a.
This is.
Of it operating, and if it changes, their permit, use permit changes. Not through the county or through the city, but through the county. Just like.
We don't need to tie our code to this document at all.
No.
No, if anything, that, excuse me.
This document refers to that the, the, the city or the jurisdiction has to have approval. That for them to even be there in the first place, so it kinda works hand in hand.
Right, hearing the discussion about parking, I think we don't tackle that at all, I don't see how we can. Other than if a food truck takes away parking spots that are required, then it couldn't be allowed. That, that, I, I would hope that the city planner or engineer, whoever is gonna give the approval for the food truck location, would take that into consideration.
Yeah, because then you gotta submit a site plan.
Yeah. So he has to sign the approved site plan by the city, so the city, in that consideration of approving the site plan, needs to make sure there's adequate parking. And adequate pedestrian circulation, and that's above my level of intelligence to figure out.
Okay, so, so I've got a motel that's got a hundred rooms, and they need a hundred parking spaces. Um, and he wants to bring a food truck in, and he's only booked at fifty percent for the weekend or whatever. Um, do we approve or deny the food truck use on a parking lot that's mostly empty? Or maybe fifty percent occupancy or eighty percent occupancy most of the time?
I, I don't think you can, I, I think you have to deny it. He has to have that, no, because he could have a flood of people coming in.
He needs plus one then?
Unless, he says, I'm gonna block out these two rooms to provide parking for this food truck. So there needs to be exceptions to the rule, and so if he literally commits to blocking out those rooms, so they're not occupied. Then that's the price he's paying to have that food truck on site.
Good, good, I like that.
And that's kind of between the responsible city person who's approving it, yes, ma'am.
So the only problem that I have with that is that is what we're trying to get absolutely away from with the code. If it leaves it subjective, that shows favoritism or a lack of favoritism. It has to list then what the exceptions are. So if you're gonna say, you know, they're gonna block out two rooms to give two rooms, that needs to be an exception notated in the code. Because anything less than that leaves it too subjective, which leaves marshal and code enforcement in a bind in enforcing any rules. That the city has, it's basically, well, I was feeling nice that day. And that's not, that's what we're trying to get away from with the code. So if you have exceptions, those need to be notated by code.
So really, do we wanna regret our.
My only concern was that we don't address it, but we don't compel the city to get real fussy with it either. Because our parking regulations here are more owners than I've seen any. I'm required to have twenty-eight parking spaces in my business. I have no idea why, except that the rule says that I have to have parking space for each agent and each customer, as if the office were full all day, every day. Which is nonsense, but our, our parking rules, our, our parking problems in Ocean Shores exist maybe one percent of the time. Trying to make a rule to fit one percent of those exceptional weekends when, but you might have to walk a block or something like that, I think that's good.
I think we don't address, I think we just. I think we don't address, I think we, we just don't address parking. I mean, and again, we'll go back to, the motion was on the table to. For the planning permission, uh, recommend allowance of food, MFUs and B one, B two, B three, and then. If desired, we can, you and I, or you can go to whenever the mayor wants to bring this to council and explain what all of this means. Which is the best solution, I think.
I agree.
And then if the questions come up on parking, we can address it as, as needed by a marshal to immediately address it.
Yeah, I, I, ninety-nine percent of the time, parking is not going to be an issue. And, and on the days when it is an issue, it's not going to be an issue because of the food trucks, it's going to be an issue because we've got something major going on in town like the Fourth of July or Sand and Sawdust. You know, some other major event that, um, the food trucks will not be the cause of the parking issue.
Agreed.
Okay, so are we going to vote on this?
Yeah, we have a motion, so.
And we have a second.
And we have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Pass by the unanimous consensus.
Wow. Good job, huh? But you know, it, it, it was a meaningful discussion, because I think a lot of points were brought out in, and, and certified, and that's what I like about discussions, and I thank you.
So the last agenda item was brought to me by the mayor, and I sort of, I know some people in here will say, uh, maybe a pet peeve will be, but it's really not. The mayor came up to me and basically we had a discussion on, it started about Conexes in the commercial district. Are they allowed, aren't they allowed, how long are they allowed? Then we started talking about other things like overnight parking of construction equipment in the commercial district. So what I'm looking for is if we, A, want to take this off, and B, if I have a volunteer to sort of dig through the code, particularly Conexes. Um, and then the other part of that is overnight parking of construction equipment on non-construction sites, is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, there's some places around here, maybe or maybe not in the commercial district where people are leaving their stuff overnight. I don't know, I'm going to Google Conex. Conex, oh, Conex is a shipping thing. So I just, I lived in one for years, go ahead, in Iraq.
That's it.
Iraq. Pat.
Um, I believe the code B one versus B two kind of spells that out already. Um, you're the research guy, but doesn't it?
Yeah, in, in the, in the B two zone, um, you're allowed to, you know, park equipment and, and stockpile or, you know, construction activities, that kind of thing. In, in the B one, that's more of a retail, commercial type, uh, zone where you're not looking at. You know, parking, construction equipment, stockpile, gravel, um, you know, those types of things. So what I think he's just asking is if we have somebody that will volunteer to sort of pull all of this together and look to see if there's anything we need to change. Because his general concern was we were getting a little too industrial in parts of the commercial district. I couldn't find a lot of Conexes, I think there's only two. In our, in our B one areas? Yeah. Okay. I drove around and only found two or three, but I did find, is this B one across the street?
Yes.
Okay, so I did find some B ones where there are people parking construction equipment overnight. Uh, but, so I think this is again, sort of just a research project, get back to the mayor as to what the code is and a recommendation to tighten the code required. So the business district looks more like a B one district and less like a B two district. First of all. This is one of those things where I never gave much consideration to the parking of the, the more industrial equipment across the street. Um, that appears, you know, based on current code, um, to be kind of like what's going on across from Ocean Pores where they have some construction equipment and industrial type stuff going on there. I've had, I've had that, you know, contractor since moved everything except for, and he still brings his skid steer in and, and, you know, it's like. You got rid of the piles and the stumps and the sand and everything else that looked more like a B two use. And we've still got, we've still got one thing there that we probably need to address. I don't know that we need more code to address things like that, I just need to enforce existing code. But I just, I'm just asking if I need somebody to raise their hand and say, I'll do a quick spin through the code to make sure this sort of stuff is properly addressed. Go have a volunteer. I'm looking at my favorite researcher over there.
I, I, I have looked through so much of the code so many times, I haven't seen any references. So I wouldn't even know where to start looking, uh, but I do have a question, and, and the question is. Uh, uh, are you talking about construction equipment on an active construction lot that aren't, okay, so, so, so that is.
Now, his concern is Conex and more, more containers, shipping containers and. Construction-type equipment parked overnight on non-construction sites in the business district. Which is a valid concern in my opinion, because I can think of two or three incidences where that's happening.
Right.
I, I'm not eager to volunteer for that, because I've looked through so much of the code, I haven't seen any references to that, but I can.
No, I, well, I just want to, uh, uh, clarification for what we're looking for here, so are we talking about like? Um, I don't think that this is the case right now, but let's say a restaurant in Bennett's, like, brings in, like, they've got a container on their lot. Then like they store extra stuff in, is that what we're talking about, or we're just talking about all, all the above? Because I can think of a couple of different restaurants that have containers on their parking lots that they use as, I mean, we've got, uh, uh, the Big Yellow Bike Place has a container right in front.
IGA has a container.
Yeah, so I, I mean, it's just, it may just be an educational thing to find out what is and isn't permitted.
May, maybe we should have design standards for Conex boxes.
Need to get a dollar, they're really not. So. And, well, and, and do we really think it's a problem? Well, apparently, and I, and I do think for me, it's seeing all this construction, people have gone out and bought good commercial property and turned it into the headquarters for their construction company. Now leaving their stuff up front.
That's clearly not a lot. It's not, it, trust me, it's right, and it didn't, so it's not a lot.
So somebody just tell me where, give me the codes, I, I'll, I'll find the code for that. And it'd be a very simple transition, we can do that. The only other piece of news before we adjourn is, long-term, he wants us to start thinking about, um, he's tried to, he called it the livable city initiative. That's one of those buzzwords I've got, really, it's up there with sustainable development, and it's a little bit sprinkled throughout our, our plan. Um, more, um, pedestrian bicycle-friendly and safer. So I'm thinking over the, over the sort of fall/winter stuff, is that the best way to address this? Go ahead.
We can start talking about sidewalks until it sounds like.
And believe me, that, and I, I told the mayor, I don't think we want to get into discussion of sidewalks on Point Brown. And our discussion was more about the proliferation of E-bikes. Is it really safe here still to operate an E-bike on Ocean Boulevard, should we have signage? Should we have designated bike routes? Is there more things we can do to make this a pedestrian bike-friendly city? You know, I mean, that's near and dear to my heart, we've honored up not being upshot, but this would be a long term. This would be some sort of a subcommittee with recommendations, but also it's.
Can I ask Robert something? Robert, do you have a, a map of the bike lane? I don't know.
I, yeah.
Because at one point, uh. Nick Bird was going to have this planning commission who wanted to verify all the bike lanes.
I could do that from memory because I ride. I ride a hundred miles a week in this town, so I know.
There was a, there was a map.
But there's not a lot designated by. In, in the particular concerns, and I mean, I need to talk to Chief about it, parts of Ocean Shore Boulevard where there is no sand dune are starting to be gone unsafe, because that's right in front of my house. And I've seen several near misses of the yellow bikes in there. So it's just sort of a, making it a, um, his question is, is there something the planning commission could look at, maybe with a subcommittee or a citizens group? To make this, he called it the livable city, but specifically said no pedestrian bike friendly. And I immediately went to sidewalks on Point Brown, and he said, oh, no, no, that's a different issue. We're not talking sidewalks on Point Brown, we're talking the rest of the city. Richard.
There is an MRS video, How to Make a Beautiful City.
Yeah.
Uh, um, and I watched the video a couple of times, and I would be happy to send you a link to that, to send to the rest of commissioners. There's some things that don't apply, we don't have any five-story buildings, uh, and, and that video says, you know, buildings should never be taller than five stories. But I think that's correct, anyway, I'm, I'm happy to send you that link, and you can send it out, and you can all watch that video. And the benefit is it triggers ideas about how we could apply some of those ideas, aren't we?
And this was sort of a warning from his, his long-term. We have our, what I call the short tactical tasks, which are.
Right.
And then, now I actually went back and rewrote the comprehensive plan, and it fits very nicely with some of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan as well, so there's value in. Down the road, we can get this one, we have time.
So we just mentioned comprehensive plan, and, and, uh, um. There is a vigorous disagreement between the current land use map in chapter three of the comprehensive plan. And one of the tasks that I would like to see the planning commission take is to bring those back, back into agreement. Uh, the, the, the land use map designations are not defined in chapter three, land use conflict, uh, and they need. And we need relatively easy to do.
With respect to Mayor's livable city idea. Employers in town are having a particularly hard time attracting help, mostly because it costs too much to rent, but. We might consider, uh, addressing our ADUs, uh, rules. You know, Ocean Shores with respect to the limitations that they currently exist under. In other words, relative, relative is only.
I mean, this is all sort of, that's more towards what I define as a livable city. When he talked about livable city, he was specifically talking bike lane and height, but I, I, if you look at the more modern definition of livable city, that's what comes in.
People only rent their ADUs to relatives, that really limits your ability to.
Yeah.
Use one.
So I've heard EDU are.
EDU.
A D.
Initial. Sorry, these are all things, so generally, and I didn't even talk about it because I'm going to have a lot of time. I sort of thought about it again, this is probably an opportunity to do some sort of subcommittee or public involvement activity of the planning commission, just to sort of start more, I mean. And getting ideas as to what we would like to do along this initiative, and things like thought through when they're created. Richard.
So I'm just trying to catch up with where we're at right now, and you're going to write a couple of lines to the mayor and say, this is our decision on food trucks. And then you're waiting on the mayor's input to see if, if we, the planning commission, need to address any draft code changes.
Correct. And, and the reason being is it may be so simple that we're adding three lines to the code, this city engineer can do it, we're not needed. I mean, the city lawyer can do it, we don't need to tell them what three words to add.
Sarah can do it.
No. So it may be that simple, but this is more to get it in front of the mayor and the planning commission, do the education of what the county does, it doesn't allow. And then give the commission the opportunity to vote to approve, and then it could go to an agenda bill. We're hoping to get, um, transalogy in on an agenda bill, one of the next two means of all that work we did on that.
So I'm glad you brought up the transalogy, and, and, uh, um, I looked, I, I think it's last month, uh, the tenth, when we presented our document. And my understanding was basically you're just going to resubmit that document to the mayor?
We're going to resubmit that document to the mayor and the city attorney for creation of an agenda bill to, uh, add to the current municipal city code, as we voted to do last time. Or on the tenth, it's kind of where we're at, right? And so now it's upon the city attorney to find time and everybody else to go through that, to get it on to the city council.
Same process as the residential design standard.
The same thought, exactly, I forgot, it's a perfect example of how we do that. Anything else? All right, um, let me think, the next person taking minutes, I actually worked on the roster, you're welcome, Dan, it would be you.
I will be here.
Oh, next meeting, so that'll fall to Richard then. We'll trade and put you, and go on that, it's, I'm not going to go through two months in advance because it never works, I'll just announce the next meeting. Hey, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Future meeting dates.
Uh, future, I'm sorry, the next meeting date is, have you sit next, sit next to me all the time, is the twelfth of June, uh, twenty twenty-two, two o'clock here.
July.
July.
July eighth, special meeting.
And July eighth, special meeting for those that can attend, and we will all get emails reminding us that there is a special meeting on July eighth at two o'clock.
So I'm taking minutes on July, eight July?
Um, yeah, I'll have you do eight July. And then Pat, you're going to have to do the one, I have to hear the Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
So Pat is doing it on the twelfth?
Yes. Because Richard's going to do it on the eighth, it's a special.
Oh, wait, I'm not going to be here, sorry.
Stop it.
No.
So it's all the way down to four on the twelfth.
That is such a bang-up job last time.
You did, you did, because you know, practice makes perfect. Is there anything else?
I think you're doing great.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I just stopped it.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Um, we don't have to, you know.